Welcome to the Murray City Municipal Council Committee of the Whole for February 16th, 2021. All right. All council members are present. Rosalba Dominguez and Brett Hales are on Zoom. So, hi guys. And I will read this. And I will read this statement that says, "Public notice is hereby given that this meeting will occur electronically without an anchor location in accordance with Utah Code 52-4-2074 due to the infectious disease COVID-19 novel coronavirus. The council chair has determined that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location because physical distancing measures may be difficult to maintain in the Murray City Council chambers. The public may view the meeting via the live stream at www.murraycitylive.com or on Facebook at www.facebook.com/murraycityutah." And "Murray" is capitalized. Okay, citizen comments or public hearing comments, and we have two, well, when we have our council meeting, we'll have two, so two public hearing comments. Anyway, they may be made as follows: live through the Zoom meeting process. Those wishing to speak during those portions of the meeting must send a request to city.council@murray.utah.gov by 3:00 PM on the meeting date. So you would have already had to have contacted Jennifer on that. She would send you a confirmation email with instructions and a Zoom link to join the meeting. They can also be read into the record by sending an email in advance or during the meeting to city.council@murray.utah.gov. That's city.council@murray.utah.gov. Comments are limited to less than three minutes, and please include your name and contact information. All right, so our first Committee of the Whole issue is approval of minutes for the Committee of the Whole for January 19th, 2021. Are there any additions or changes for the minutes? Okay, hearing none. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Great, thanks Brett. Brooke, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Ms. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Dominguez?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye. Thanks, Brooke. All right, our discussion items. Let's start with fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget amendment, and Brenda Moore. You have 15 minutes.
Okay, so as we discussed in the mid-year budget review, we are going to make some modifications to the 2020-2021 budget. I'm going to start with the grant revenues that we have received. So these do not affect reserves in any way. The police beard growing allowance, I guess, where you get to bribe the police chief to grow a beard during October or November, I think it was this year, they made $1,000, and they're going to donate that to the victims' advocate emergency responses. So we need to put that revenue and expense into the budget. The Utah Department of Health gave us a $3,600 Kids Zone mobile room divider, so they can adjust the size of the room based on the number of kids that are in there and keep the older kids away from the smaller kids. It's been really good for the Kids Zone, so they can keep that open. The EMS grant that we received turned out to be $1,451 more than we had previously budgeted, so we're going to increase the budget for that. There was a provider relief grant that the fire department found is part of CARES for $11,787. They are purchasing a hands-free CPR device, which I guess they have already had those before, but they needed to replace one, so they got this grant to do it instead of city funds. And then also a Create in Utah CARES grant, which helped fund some of the arts programming that we have done since COVID hit, some of the online programs. Also, in the general fund, I am proposing that we increase our sales tax revenue budget by $147,400, and we are doing that and appropriating it for the expenditures that we're going to increase the city council payroll due to our retirement and the payout for that, the job share sharing and wage changes. We've put back into the budget a hundred thousand dollars for the computer replacement program for PCs and various other computer equipment and servers that we had pulled out last year. Increase the travel and training budget for the police by $7,000, so they can do the appropriate trainings that they need. And also increase the city council professional services by $2,500 because of the increased cost of the broadcast and the Zoom meetings that we have incurred. And in great anticipation and hopes that we will be having a fun days parade and to buy candy for that if that should happen, because we do not want to go down, or you don't want to be in the parade without the appropriate taffy to throw. The CIP fund, we are going to put some of the requests back into the budget that we had previously pulled due to the uncertainty for COVID. Parks needs $40,000 for a truck to replace an aging truck. The senior recreation building needs $45,000 to fix their HVA system, so that they have one. The police equipment, we're going to add back the police cars that we had previously told them not to buy. So I think it's like eight police cars and appropriate equipment for $292,000. Public Works is going to get $25,000 for speed signs, $20,000 to complete the transportation study, and $200,000 to complete the Hanauer Street Extension landscaping, which was inadvertently left out of the original budget. And then the CIP fund is going to transfer $47,360 to the golf fund. So in the golf fund, due to that transfer, I'm going to, we're going to receive that revenue and allocate it to the two sand trap machines, sand trap rake machines, and $10,000 for golf cart lift, so they can get the golf carts to a height to work on them. I guess there's broke. And just in case you're wondering, Councilmember Turner, they did research the possibility of getting electric sand trap brakes, but they are not, the technology is not there yet, and the people who have them have had lots of issues with breakdowns. And so I think this time they're going to go with normal gas-powered sand trap brakes. And also, yeah, I know it's kind of a, I wish the technology was there for that.
Probably right on the plus.
Also, in the golf fund, we are going to appropriate from reserves $379,775 to purchase the golf carts. We had a long discussion about the need. They have worn out their golf carts due to increased use, and they were at their end of life anyway. So we are going to purchase new ones, the ones with lithium batteries. Hopefully, they will last more than five years this time, and they're also just better in general for use of power. And then in the risk fund, I don't think we had actually explicitly talked about this, but we are going to add $100,000 in professional services from their reserves for increased litigation expenses. I think we had talked about in the mid-year budget that there were three or four or five cases, I'm not sure how many, that have just all come to a head all at the same time. So we're going to increase their litigation, professional services for the litigation expenses associated with those. So those are the general things that are in the budget opening that will come before you on March 2nd. There'll be a public hearing and then your consideration of the ordinance. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Brenda?
I don't.
How about you? Do you have any, Kat?
No, thank you. It's always good news when we have grants to bring in, and grateful we can put some money back in these projects for departments.
Rosalba, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Uh huh, Brett?
No, but thank you for that report. We appreciate that, Brenda.
Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Brenda. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're at Open and Public Meeting Act Training. We look forward to this every year. GL?
Speak through this mic or the, okay, all right, got it. This is annual training that's required by state law?
Do you have your microphone on?
I have this one on. Is that, okay, can you hear me better?
Yeah, now I can hear you.
This is annual training that's required by state law, and the chair or the presiding officer of the public body is required to ensure that this happens every year. And so that would be, that would fall to Council Chair Turner. The public policy of the Open Public Meetings Act is to remind us that public bodies, and of course, the city council is a public body, exists to aid the people in their business, to conduct the people's business. And public bodies, part of that policy is that should take their actions openly and should deliberate openly. Openly, I think it's important to remember, refers to the ability of the public to observe. We have a citizen comment, like many entities do, and that's fine, but otherwise, members of the audience may not participate in the deliberations of the council unless they're explicitly invited to, like in a public hearing, for example. Meeting, of course, is the convening of the council with a quorum. So when every three of you meet to discuss a matter that you have jurisdiction over, or to receive comments from the public about that matter, or if you're acting upon a matter, taking a vote, that would be a meeting. Chance gatherings or social gatherings are not considered a meeting unless you talk shop. Then it could be converted into a meeting, would violate the Open Public Meetings Act. Quorum, of course, is the majority of the membership, and that would be three for the city council. And then there's notifying the public. What we're required to do under state law is, since we have regularly scheduled meetings every year, we're required once a year to give an annual notification, which we send to the paper that talks about the place, date, and time of each of the meetings that we're going to have in the coming year. In addition to that, we give at least 24 hours' notice to each individual public meeting. We do that by posting the agenda here in the city. We also send it to the, post it to the Utah Public Notice website, and provide notice to the media on each meeting. That notice, of course, can be disregarded if there is a need for an emergency meeting, and at that point, we give the best, practical notice to the public that we can. The agenda, as you look at your agenda, keep in mind that we must describe each topic with reasonable specificity, so the public will know what it is that we're going to discuss that night at that meeting. Each topic needs its own agenda item, and a topic raised by the public at the discretion of the chair can be discussed, but it cannot be acted upon. We've talked about closed meetings before. Murray has a very proud tradition, in my opinion, of not closing many meetings. Several years ago, there was an article in the paper that pointed that out. We'd only closed maybe less than a handful, I think, compared to a lot of other cities. So there could be a time when that was necessary, that would require a quorum to be present, two-thirds of those present voting for, to approve the closed meeting. You give the reasons for the meeting, the location of it, and the vote of each council member for or against. It's publicly announced before you close the meeting. And there, I've listed on the screen reasons that you can close the meeting. There's a lot of other reasons, but they really don't apply to the city. These are the ones that apply, I would say, most of the time to a given city. Litigation would be one. Real property transactions would be another. And then, of course, you have to have, record the meetings, I'm sorry, the minutes of the meeting, the closed meeting. That's a protected record that can be challenged in court, and then a judge would have to decide whether those were disclosed. Electronic meetings, we now know that there are two types of electronic meetings. One is where you have an anchor location and where the public is invited to come. That would be if someone was traveling or out of the area. They could, as two are doing tonight, participate electronically. But there's also the electronic meetings without an anchor location. That's what we're experiencing now in this pandemic. That's the one that requires the chair to make a written determination, state the determination on the record, and then include that in the public notice. Finally, when it gets down to enforcement, it does not violate the Open Public Meetings Act to remove somebody who's disrupting the meeting to the point where it's not orderly anymore. You can't have someone removed. Final actions that we take that are in violation of the Open and Public Meetings Act are voidable, meaning a judge could determine that they were, that we had violated the act and that the action we had taken, the vote we had taken, was no good. That would be voidable. There's public enforcement for violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. The Utah Attorney General, the county attorney, the district attorney can enforce the chapter. There's also a private enforcement, where someone who's denied a right under the chapter can sue the city and get a determination as to whether we did violate the Open Public Meetings Act. And then finally, to violate the closed meeting portion of the act intentionally is a Class B misdemeanor. So something we obviously take very seriously. I want to talk real quickly. Utah's got, I think, a heritage of transparency. Utah was the first state to pass this sunshine law, which was in 1898, the Utah Open Public Meetings Act. Sunshine law simply means that it's, that we hold our meetings in the open where the public can observe and be present. And then finally, I thought this was really an appropriate statement. This was written by a federal judge, now deceased, but had sat on the bench in the Sixth Circuit. The Sixth Circuit includes Ohio and Michigan, Kentucky, I think Tennessee. And this was a time after 9/11, when somebody was being held in deportation proceedings, and the government wanted to have these proceedings behind closed doors. And this is what this judge wrote. He wrote, "Democracies die behind closed doors. When government begins closing doors, it selectively controls information rightfully belonging to the people. Selective information is misinformation." I think it's important to focus on that part where he says, "controls information rightfully belonging to the people." The information that comes to us as public servants comes only because we are public servants, but that information belongs to the people. The judge went on to warn and said, "Without question, the events of September 11th, 2001 left an indelible mark on our nation, but as we, we as a people are united in the wake of the destruction to demonstrate to the world that we are a country deeply committed to preserving the rights and freedoms guaranteed by our democracy. Today, we reflect our commitment to those democratic values by ensuring that our government is held accountable to the people and that First Amendment rights are not impermissibly compromised. Open proceedings with a vigorous and scrutinizing press, and I would add, public, serve to ensure the durability of our democracy." But that was a very appropriate statement for this particular type of training. Any questions for me?
Are there any questions for GL up to this point?
No questions.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, Brett?
GL, I don't know if you can go back to that slide, but somewhere you had quoted, or you had said on one of your slides that if someone in the public had brought something up and it was not on the agenda, that we can, we can comment about that. Explain just a little, I know you're probably talking about the citizens' comments, public, or I mean citizens' comments.
So the rule is, Brett, that we only are allowed to discuss items on the agenda. The exception to that is if someone brings up, say, in citizen comment, something not on the agenda, you are allowed to discuss it at the discretion of the chair, but we aren't allowed to make any decisions on it.
Sure.
So generally speaking, I would say it's not a great practice to comment on everything someone says, but occasionally you may want to do that, and you're allowed to do that so long as you don't make any decisions.
Okay, okay. And then the next thing I had is you talked about an anchor location. So what we're doing now, I mean, besides Rosalba and myself, but there is an anchor location, so that, so a statement doesn't need to be read when you have an anchor location?
No, it's a really good question. So tonight would not be considered an anchor location because the public is not here. So to have an anchor location, you have both a quorum, but you also have the public.
Gotcha.
So this is that second type of electronic meeting where there is not an anchor location.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks, GL.
Yeah.
Thanks, Brett. Rosalba, do you have any questions up to this point?
No, thank you.
Sure, okay. You can continue.
So I want to say it was last year or year before, Council Chair Turner suggested that we begin having annual training on harassment. We did one last year, I remember, and maybe the year before. I don't recall for sure. But this was a part of that, at that request. There's a policy that you have in your council rules. It's Rule Number Nine, I think it is, that the city will foster and maintain a work environment free from discrimination and intimidation. That rule, Rule Nine, is applicable to the city council. And the reason that this came about, the city administrative side has a policy, an anti-harassment policy, and we thought it important, not because harassment rules don't apply to the city council, but to put this in writing so that it's there and it can be reviewed, and again, we can have training on it. Even without this rule, clearly you would be held to a high standard in terms of harassment, given your positions at the top of city government. Employees look to you for an example, and you're in a position where you can't have a lot of influence. And so it's important that you are well aware of this. We have the definition in the rules of harassment, which basically lists those protected classes. And harassment is any unwelcome conduct that's based on one of those protected classes. What conduct is harassing conduct? Demeaning comments, whether in writing or orally, using unwelcome epithets, gestures, other physical conduct. I think it's important also to point out that harassment doesn't have to be sexual in nature, doesn't have to be motivated by sexual desire, to be illegal. It's just offending conduct based on someone's gender that is pervasive enough or severe enough to create the hostile work environment. The EEOC has guidelines that defines sexual harassment as unwelcome sexual advances, requests for sexual favors, and so forth. You can see that on your screen. I think in terms of the city council, those could apply, and the reason I say that is this submission to such conduct is a term or condition of individual's employment. City employees look up to you, and there is a belief that you have, you could have some type of influence on their employment. And so I think it's important that you keep that in mind when you have any type of engagement with the city count, with employees. Also, conduct that has the purpose or effect of interfering with work performance, or that creates an intimidating, hostile, offensive work environment. Part of this is not to say that, obviously, you don't want to engage in this conduct, but if you see this conduct happening, it's important to, that you speak up as well. Unwelcome conduct is conduct that just is unwanted, and it is unwelcome or unwanted when the person subjected to it considers it unwelcome. Either gender may harass, either gender may be a victim. I think we oftentimes think of a male harassing a female, and that probably is the majority of cases, but there's also female harassing males, and same-sex harassment is also illegal. There's listed here some of the inappropriate conduct. These are the more, I think, obvious ones. On the next screen, there's some others that are not, maybe not as obvious. I'll go over those. The next, this list, compliments of an employee's appearance, commenting on the attractiveness of others in front of an employee, we're talking about a pervasive, uncomfortable type of conversation, not necessarily a one-time, hey, that looks great. But I think you know it when you see it, or you know it when you hear it. Asking about another's intimate life and the photos and things like that, I think we're all aware of that, but I think it's good to review that as well. Suggestive text messages or emails, repeated touching, and of course, obvious one is some sort of sexual assault would obviously be sexual harassment. The laws that apply, there's a federal law, it's Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, and state law has a comparable law to the Civil Rights Act, and then Council Rule Nine is also one of these. I would say that's a law that applies as well. When it comes to this conduct, it's important to report it. If this conduct involves a city employee, someone on a board or commission, maybe you see it as with a vendor, then you would want to report that to the mayor. If it's something that involves a council member, then as we talked about that, we concluded that you report that to me. A prompt investigation ensues, and as far as possible, that's kept confidential. And then corrective action would be brought to the city council potentially to take action against the person who's perpetrated, if it's a council member. And the city council does not permit any type of retaliation for reporting or someone who cooperates in investigation. That is, that is it in a nutshell. What questions can I answer?
Questions for GL? No questions from you two? Brett? Rosalba?
Not for me, thank you.
No, not for me, thank you. Thank you, GL.
Thank you.
Okay, the social media, you have that as, is that something we discuss here, or?
Yeah, I didn't plan to go into great depth in that, but that is, the social media had to do with the Open Public Meetings Act, I believe.
It has.
The Open and Public Meetings Act. The social media, right, has to do with that, where you don't want to violate the Open Public Meetings Act by getting on social media and essentially having a quorum present.
Right, right. I know that was on the first one, but I was just noticing that we, you didn't talk about that.
No, just for your consideration.
Okay, good. All right. Well, that wasn't terrible. Thank you for doing. Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. Okay, if there are no more questions, we'll continue on, and we're actually have lots of time for you, Kat, for your legislative update.
Excellent, I'll talk very slowly. Stretch out the time. All right, so first of all, I want to thank the mayor's office intern. I should have written down their name. What was?
Kayden Daly.
And they are fantastic. I was sitting down, I thought I was going to type this up myself, and I saw GL's email, and I thought, they are amazing! And they put all of this in one place, so great. Because there are so many bills going on in our quick 45-day session. And so the ones on here, the ones that impact us here in Murray, so I'll just go through them all, and GL has offered to help out with any explanations or please jump, feel free to jump in if there's further things for any of these that we should touch on. So the first one is utility permitting amendments, which the ULCT is opposing. And that's a bill where municipalities can't restrict any utility services based on the type of utility. And there is an amendment, and the ULCT changed their position to neutral. There's not a fiscal impact for this one. And it was signed by the Speaker of the House and sent for enrolling on Friday. Anything we need to know about that one, GL? Okay. Next up, we've got a voter referendum amendment. This is a land use law, includes property rezoning. Local law includes property zoning. Voter referendums passed after April 15th can still get on the ballot if approved by sponsors. There's no fiscal impact for this one. This one's currently with Senate Judiciary, Law Enforcement, and Criminal Justice Committee. Oh, and that one was on the agenda for this morning, so I'm not sure what happened with that one this morning.
So I, I'm not sure what that, what happened to it, but that was basically a clarification to explicitly put in the law that a, a rezone is a legislative act that is referable.
Excellent, thank you. Then we've got a land use, an eminent domain advisory board amendment. This one is just extending an advisory board, so they're always moving the sunset dates so they can continue their work. Then we've got impact fees amendment. This is, uh, let's see. They have, they talked about this one on Thursday. I feel like I have no sense of what day it is. I'm looking at dates and going, did that date already happen? That date already happened. Says it's can use expense for overhead when calculating impact fees and supported by ULCT. Anything exciting with that one? Nope, all right. Firearms preempted, preemption amendments. This is an oppose for ULCT. The state has sole authority to regulate firearms and make exceptions, defines consequences of violation. This one is still in House Rules Committee.
In a nutshell, I think what happened with that was, we all, we already know that the state has preempted us. We can't pass an ordinance that violates, that contradicts state law. But apparently, there were a couple of entities that had policies that were contradictory. And so this clarifies, you simply cannot go against state law.
And then we've got a bill here by Rep. Ward and Senator Anderek, Single Family Housing Modifications, ADU. That's accessory dwelling units, and ULCT has opposed this one. This is a bill that would mean that municipalities cannot regulate ADUs or restrict the number of individuals, not a household, to anything less than four individuals. Three if the municipality is within the boundaries of a university.
So that one passed?
This one has been circled.
Oh, okay, so it's...
Yeah, is that correct?
It is. I, I think, I think on this one, it's important to keep in mind, I believe. Murray City passed an accessory dwelling unit ordinance years ago. I, I don't recall exactly how many, but it's been quite a few years ago. And in that ordinance, we require that the home be occupied, occupied by the owner, that there be two spaces, two additional spaces to park off-street. And I believe it's confined, I don't remember how many square feet it is, 900 square feet or some type of, of limit on the number of square feet. And I, I think what you'll find this legislative session is what we find every legislative session. And that is, we feel like there are times when the state legislature is encroaching on local control. And this is one of those times where we're feeling that the state has made this a priority, making ADUs available, more available, so that there's more opportunity for people to have housing in the valley. And they will, they will lift some of these restrictions that we now have. They, they, for example, and this is, it's not done yet, Kat's right, it's, they're, they're still negotiating. And the, we were told that the representative doing this has been very good to reach out and talk to ULCT and, and others about the bill. But it will probably only restrict it at most to one additional parking spot. It, it may or may not restrict the square footage. So there's some things that'll be a little bit different, but I think you'll find that there's a lot of change happening at the legislature when it comes to housing. And their main goal is to make it more affordable to live in the valley. And so we, we may not love what they're doing, but this is part of it. And this is one of the big, this is one of the big parts that they, that they have put as a priority this year, is the accessory dwelling unit.
So are they restricting how much can be charged?
No.
So just because it's an accessory dwelling unit, they can charge as much as they want? So how does that meet, you know, the standard of?
I suppose, I, I don't know the answer to that because I don't know, I don't think it's necessarily completely greed that, that drives this, but I think that your point is well taken. I think the idea is that you have already existing housing stock. We're talking single-family, basically. And if you can fit families or more people, then they want to try to do that. Now, having said that, I think your point is well taken. This may limit itself, right? If you own a place and you don't want to share with someone else, you don't have to. But if you want to, and, and some, I, I think this was put out in the, I want to say the Gardner Institute, whatever that's called. It has, they wrote a paper on affordable housing. This was one, this is one of the things that they wrote about, was how this moves in the direction of more affordable housing. So I don't know exactly, but I, I, you know, I don't think you're going to find somebody that's going to live in a basement if it's astronomical amount. So I think the idea is, it probably won't be. But if it is, it is, and that, yeah, we don't control that either.
And it's about the affordability of the person owning the house too. Because if they're renting it out, they can afford their mortgage. That's part of the argument.
Yeah.
Not about the cost of the rental unit. Yeah. Uh, next up is Representative Ray, Local Government Building Regulation Amendments. And I'll say, a lot of these bills I had to do a lot of reading into and a lot of technical reading. And this was one that just seemed obviously an oppose for ULCT before we got far into it all. And that, this bill proposes construction can opt out of independent inspections or hire their own inspector. And municipalities can't restrict certain design elements, and if a building was damaged by a natural disaster, repairs are exempt from certain code requirements. So that one's pretty, pretty clear why we would oppose it. And then there's Senator Sandel, Outdoor Advertising Amendments. This one has had lots of buzzes for cities, ULCT opposes. This one has been substituted and circled again as of Friday. I don't think it's on an agenda again yet, as far as I've heard, but this would restrict municipalities' ability to regulate placement brightness and other elements of outdoor advertising signs and billboards. So it takes away a lot of our, our local rights on that.
Yep, you're right, GL. I mean, they keep trying to do that. They don't like to have their rights taken away from the federal government, but they're okay with doing it with us, with cities. Anyway, I, I find that frustrating.
And then we've got Representative Snyder has Sheriff's Amendments. ULCT opposes this. This is sheriff has authority over local police department if they disagree on enforcement of riot, civil disturbance, and breach of peace. This is still in House Rules Committee, so it hasn't gotten too far. Anything on that one? No? Okay. And then we've got Representative Harrison and Senator Mckell have Emergency Management Amendments. This one is a support by ULCT. Political subdivisions appoint an emergency manager and create an emergency operations plan, and state agencies have to consult with the Division of Emergency Management before taking on construction projects. State disaster recovery accounts earned interest to be deposited back into the account. So some emergency preparedness. Let's see, we've got one more page of these. All right. Next up, we've got Representative Ferry and Senator Owens with Subdivision Platt Amendments. ULCT has not made a recommendation, support, or oppose yet on this one. It's described as surveyors must specify water conveyance facilities entirely within or within 100 feet of the proposed plat and notify the owner of the water conveyance facility of the proposed plat. Anything on that one? Okay. Then we've got Senator Iwamato and Representative Wilcox, Law Enforcement Internal Investigation Requirements. This is a support for ULCT. It requires that an employing agency notify the peace officer standards and training division if a peace officer separates from the agency while an investigation is in progress. Investigation must be turned over to the division of certain, in certain circumstances. Anything on that one?
I, I think that's just an, an extension of where I think we are going with this legislative session. And that is, currently, if, if there's an internal affairs investigation and someone resigns before the investigation's over, then it's considered over. This would, would send that investigation to post in certain circumstances. Where, what that means is, the intent is, an officer who's got a, who's a problem can't just go to the next jurisdiction and be a problem there. The, the record will follow even if it's not a completed investigation. I think that's the intent behind that.
And it doesn't now, that's...
Does not now, that's correct.
Yeah. And we've got two more. We've got Senator Maine and Representative Donegan. They have metro town and met, excuse me, metro township amendments, which is a support for ULCT. It repeals provisions restricting a metro township's ability for energy sales and use tax and allows a metro township to impose an energy sales and use tax or a telecommunications license tax. Anything on that one? All right. And then we've got Senator Harper and Representative Handy, Community Reinvestment Agency Amendments. ULCT does, ULCT does not currently have a position on this. Agencies can levy a property tax on property within the agency's boundaries and restricts the agency from widening the scope of some project plans or project budgets. An agency can use property tax revenue for agency projects. And that one's not on the agenda yet for its committee. Yeah, anything for that one?
The idea behind that is that you have a, a project area where you could then impose a tax as opposed to, I, I think that, if I'm not mistaken, this is when the, the time comes where you can no longer collect tax increment. You could then impose a tax. This is just an, it's not required to do. It's an added possibility for these project areas.
Yeah. But there's still a lot going on, and so we'll report back at the next council meeting. But I've had some good back and forths with Senator Davis and reaching out. Reached out to lots of other legislators too regarding many of these bills, but he's responded back and been really courteous about information and grateful that we're giving him the city's perspective. So can keep reaching out too.
All right. Any questions for Kat or GL on any of these bills? Rosalba?
No.
Brett?
Nope, thank you, I appreciate the update.
All right. Wow, look at this, we have a half an hour. Crazy, that's awesome. All right, do we have any announcements, Jennifer?
Um, just one that I've already sent to you guys through email, but the Murray, Murray Area Chamber of Commerce is doing a ribbon cutting for their rebranding on Thursday, February 25th at 11:30. If any of you guys want to go to that, let me know, and I'll get you registered.
Okay. All right, sounds good. We are adjourned.